We have a guest, we have a water ban violation hearing. Our first guest. A water ban violation hearing. It's 1:08 Sunday's Way.
Yes. Do you have to be masked for all the time?
I do have the picture, so I have the brief yet. So from distance, I can take them off. So on timing team, we have picked it all fine.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Could you explain the proceedings to us?
So proceedings tonight.
Thank you for that review and your input.
I guess we can present. We said I'm the chairperson, it's all kind of this, so.
So I guess the question would be, who is the hearing officer for the town? Under 21D.
The hearing officer would be the chairman. Well, the town is, we're a separate entity from the town, so.
Right. Well, I did see that. I know they're not a full enterprise fund. Because it's supported by the tax base and by the user fees. So I don't know when your time comes from, I have to research that. Take care of what you are in the town's court. But is there going to be one hearing officer deciding this? Or is this going to be a vote of the commissioners?
My understanding is the vote of the commissioners, correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
That's the proceeding. So we're going to present, and then you'll listen, and then you'll make a decision somewhere down the line.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Would a resident, so it'd be nice to not pull everybody else in, if that's okay.
That's fine. I'm Jason Quinn, I'm the clerk of the water commission board. Derek Black, chairman of the water district. Glenn Schwartz was the other chairman, but she resigned last month. So we're going to be having a third person obviously come on the board once we have an election.
I'm Tina, the co-founder.
Jeff Kona, superintendent.
I'm Chuck Adams, we're on the consulting engineer. I'm here for another project.
Okay. That's good.
So. Can we, who's all represented, who's sitting here? Can we know?
I'm Katie Hiba. I have a little bit inside.
Okay.
I'm Michael Taylor, 1:00 Sunday's Way.
Justin Money is at 1:11 Sunday's Way.
Okay.
I'm Ray, I'm on 12 Sunday's Way. And so on presentation from the violation. We'd like to start off by objecting and contesting the ability of the notice for its presentation, or that it doesn't conform with state law. And the way the violations were presented doesn't conform with 21D. If you'd like to elaborate on how to put it.
Yeah, feel free, that's okay.
This is the, you have the approved violation notice? Is that good?
Yeah, you're pretty welcome.
This is the approved violation notice that the court has approved for non-criminal fees under 21D. It's a notice that has on it, you're right, appeal, and the other information that's required by law. And the notice that, put your hand out, it doesn't look anywhere, it's not even close. The other problem with the notice is the way it was presented. We understand that Commissioner Quinn, who was on Sunday's Way at 4:38 on the day in question.
I was not on the, I was not there at 4:38, I'm not there. I got an anonymous complaint from someone that was in the area, just to clarify, so everyone is aware, I was not there.
Okay. So we would further contest the complaint. Because 21D is specific, that has to be one of the enforcement officers, which you commissioners appointed yourselves as the enforcement officers, special police, and the police indicted. Those are people that are letting in complaints. So what you're saying is you took a complaint from somebody that called you, and then went ahead and wrote a violation based on hearsay and something you never saw.
The, probably the fourth time this happened that I addressed, yes, correct.
It's not relevant, the fourth time, this is this specific.
This specific time, the fourth time, yeah, yes, the fourth time.
That's being appealed.
Yep.
And that's why the objection is being entered, which is going to be very important if the decision is that it stands, because this is a little pellet that's very hard before a clerk magistrate. So I just wanted to make sure that we know if you were there or not. Because if you were there, and even you know it, you never appeared there to say to anybody to shut the water off until Monday, which would have allowed the water to continue to run, and, you know, you're trying to conserve water. Which, we agree with that, by the way. The other problem we would like to object to then is the structure. Because 21D is very, very explicit that the person or entity that has written the complaint cannot also be the hearing officer of Massachusetts. It's an ethical violation, and it's a conflict of interest. So we contend that this area is not valid.
So I understand where you're coming from, and I was unaware that Jason did not see. But when we pulled the profile of the meter.
Not relevant.
It's absolutely relevant, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know what time that that supposed person saw or didn't see. But from, I just pulled the record, so from 9/18, which was the day in question, which we did not see. Do you guys understand that I can see that you still used 530 gallons of water that day?
Absolutely.
Do you, does everybody understand that irrigation systems in town are illegal?
They're illegal?
Well, they're not supposed to have irrigation systems, because it's posted, right, in our, that no irrigation systems in town.
No, we are, no, we're legal.
So how old is?
2016.
So that's new.
No, it's new after you guys have stated it on one of your meetings.
Actually, irrigation was banned around 2001.
The town approved that you guys acted and it was approved. It's not something that you did behind the backs of anybody.
You serviced the back of the house on the system.
So the day in question, irrigation system, still after, all the way up till last week. Every other day, 9:13, 9:14, all the way till 10:12, they're still irrigating, so we understand that.
Has anybody seen that? How do you know that's with the water?
Because this is the meter, pull the meter on every single time. This is a profile, the meter.
Right, we understand that, but what could be used anyway?
With 530 gallons of water.
People could stand in the shower all day, unless you've seen it. 21D is explicit, how good, I mean.
You're stating the date and time, that's what you're about to, you wrote it down, that the time of violation was 4:30 PM on 9/18. You wrote this down. So therefore, what's in question is this day and this time.
You're right, no, you're right, you're right, I agree with you, I agree with you.
Of usage, it doesn't matter, it was a thousand gallons a minute. What is in question is you, you said in this violation stating that I, now I'm hearing that Mr. Quinn wasn't even in the neighborhood, he takes a phone call, which could have come from anybody with some sort of pretense of trying to, you know, say something, or do something, or try to get us in trouble for something that wasn't occurring.
So you're absolutely right, you did not water it, pull it there. Oh, you're right, it says you stopped water that night at 7 o'clock.
That's the issue, that's the only issue.
Stop water at 7 o'clock to 8 o'clock, you used 750 gallons of water.
It's the only issue before this hearing, it's the only issue that will go to appeal before magistrate. So if it's agreed that there was no watering going on at the time of that violation, I would say that.
What's in the book last night, at that time? Like that fourth, when I got the, when I got the information.
And I also talked to the superintendent myself on Monday, and he told me that this board did not allow calling in violations on residents, calling in on residents. And I can understand why, and I can appreciate that. Because if I'm at Mr. Jones, I can pick up the phone and call Mr. Quinn and say, "Mr. Quinn, look, this guy's watering. You go hit him with a violation, you don't work Monday."
That was more policy.
That's not the way it works.
That was more policy, that's not what I'm saying.
Policy goes, goes well. Goes well, they're elected. And there was the Academy of Water. But the five laws of the town and the state laws.
Right, but speaking of 21D and all that.
Well, it's not, it's not law, that's the law.
We declare a water emergency?
Right.
Per our Water Management. Just a second.
Yeah.
Per our Water Management Act, when we declare a water emergency, we are lawful.
I understand that.
Basically, when we call a ban or an audit even, or whatever that is, whatever we decide, it is undermined jurisdiction, right? Not some clerk magistrate, this is, I shouldn't be rid of this. This is subject to however you want to.
That's what the town, DDP gives you specifically.
But we're not the town, the DDP gives guidelines.
We're not the town, we're not the town.
When you speak of 21D, they give us guidelines to go by, they don't give us a specific.
The violation was like in the 1970s, 21D, you have to adopt it to use it, and you did, so.
We've adopted exactly what the DDP has had.
And you had to submit to the court, to them give you, and then you codified it, or the clerk codified it. They used 21D, they had their own hearing officer, which is the corporation counsel. So we as residents also have never seen you run management plans despite of the state. And we don't even know if the state has given you back the permission to go ahead and declare this ban, because you have the power.
I've never been me who called, who did.
You have that.
Yes. If you look it up online, you can see.
The state, the state has that?
It's right on the website.
Because as residents, we never get that, I know that.
Unless you look at the DDP's website, yeah, I find it, it's on their website. It lists all the cities and towns that they, some form of a water ban or audit even, any of that.
So is that why it expires on November 30th? Because that's the only time that you could have into this unless you put another plan together?
No, we extended it due to the strain of our wells.
But you're restricted on how long you can build it?
No, we are not, no, we are not.
Without a full plan?
We are not restricted.
Are you going to mitigate this?
We're not restricted.
Really?
So I'm not, I'm going to be 100% honest with you, we made mistakes.
Well, if this is the state, all of the state.
If the law's going to drive you.
So I'm, I'm just like, we have our best, because I've been doing this enough for two and a half years. In two and a half years, I've watched this place go from here to here. And I'll be 100% honest with you, I'm not hiding anything, I'm not a politician. We need water, we can't find the water, this town has grown so much, so fast, and it's not your problem. But everybody didn't know what was going on around here until about a year and a half ago. The old superintendent left, we got a new superintendent. I'm not blaming anybody. The reason why we're doing the water bans, we have no water. Plus we can't buy water.
We don't have a water ban.
It's, wait, not water, we just finished. We tried buying water from Somerset, we can't do it. We tried buying water from Tom, we can't do it. We're in a major drought. I want to be 100% honest with you, next summer again, we're going to be in the same boat we can.
And we'll support it.
I'm just being 100% honest, we're working to try to get more water, we're trying to find new land, we're trying to drill more wells. It takes years to put in one well. And I'm not putting blame on anybody in the past, but this isn't, this is very serious.
Yeah, we understand that, we work, we live in the town too. And we object to the process of a commissioner, they can phone calls from other residents.
I agree, we made mistakes, and it was a mistake made.
I think remedy here tonight, commissioners, are to throw this out, install. That's what I think remedy is on this.
Well, you have to understand something too, that it has to stop on everyone's hand. You're right, if we made a mistake, we made a mistake. But everybody has to conform to this.
Agreed.
And as of two days ago, people still watering.
Let me give you an example, a little outside, because you brought some outside stuff into this conversation. My wife works in a hospital. She comes home, she probably takes about three or four more showers than she's ever taken, because she wants to, you know.
That's okay.
And in town, and people in town, now, I don't know if the payrolls do with their water, you know, that's their business. But it's not unusual for what we walk in a place, it is a violation, and I don't like this condition.
No, that's fine.
But my toilets are running, and I told the superintendent, I fixed my back door, man, that because all the sediment that come in from the breakage is that you are not correct and proper in town. You're going to get somebody sick here.
And you understand that we don't have any water to flush.
It doesn't make a difference, Rachel.
Across connection.
This is a farming community, a cross connection can kill somebody when you call it. You can't go out and repair a break, and then turn it back on, and shove that water downstream into somebody's house that could take a drink without decontaminating it.
We follow protocol every single time there's a break.
You do what?
We follow protocol every time there's a break.
I don't think so.
Really?
I don't think so.
We absolutely do.
Absolutely, you dechlorinate those pipes, and you flush them out with the hydrant?
At what time? Why would you dechlorinate a pipe?
Because it can damage it.
That's taking chlorine out of the pipe.
Well, not dechlorinate, decontaminate, I'm sorry.
So we didn't see a chlorine residual, right?
Inside my house, I ended up with a lot of residual from the pipes, that are inside the ventilation of those pipes.
That's, yeah.
I had to fix my toilets. So my toilets are running, there's a lot of other toilets in this town running, and that's a big abuse of water that's being wasted. You're not looking into that, you're chasing people with sprinkler systems. I can't, as you told me, somebody flushing their car, you don't want to bother them, you're not going to need a violation. You're looking strictly at automatic sprinkler systems.
Well, if he said that, he's wrong, because we have a water ban in effect for those reasons. And it's fine, you're up to see a lawyer of some sort, that's fine, that's great.
I'm not a lawyer, I'm fine.
Well, well, fine, but you're getting off on a tech, you're going to get off on a technicality here, but it's clear as day that you guys are sprinkling, that whole development is sprinkling.
That's not true.
Let me finish. It's very clear, one night I drove through, and it had topped four sprinklers, and that whole development turned on. Video it. It's blatant neglect for the water ban, and it's honestly insusible, and it's pathetic, honestly. It really is.
It's just that.
No, it's not.
Several.
Several. So for you to sit here, stand here, and, you know, get off on a technicality, yes. But to sit here and say you're with the town, you agree the ban, that's frankly wrong, because it's clear as day you guys are watering. And you guys don't obviously take it seriously, and that's fine, it's, it's, it's not, it's not nice to the other residents in the town.
And you park in front of the house, and my lawn's over, I didn't get it, so everybody in that development is not using water.
So then why are you here then?
I'm here in support of the neighbors. And we are concerned about the process, commissioner. We are concerned about you taking phone calls from a non-resourced and letting in a fine, a civil fine on a resident of Dayton.
And again, you will get off on a technicality, that's fine. Are you guys watering grass, still irrigating?
I am.
I'm not, I'm looking at Mr. and Mrs. Phablet.
Hand watering.
Exactly.
Which are lots of.
So that's, you're not allowed to, you're not allowed to. You're not allowed to, period, we have a, we have a water ban in place, that's a pre-draft mistake, you are not allowed to.
Process and hand watering.
You are not allowed to, period, that's right, it's plants, yes, sorry.
I got a question.
By definition of grasses plant, so if you want to like.
I'm allowed, you know. So the water being started, I had a big project in my backyard, I spent over $150,000 on the project, then we had water, okay? What am I supposed to do?
Oh, I agree with you.
I'm paying taxes, I am paying.
I, I spent.
You know what I'm saying, what are we supposed to do? I'm supposed to use all that?
So you're, so basically what you're saying is, and I do for you, because I, you can ask these guys.
And I'm just.
I'm not a fan, but I have.
I've got thousands of dollars, now I can't, I can't do anything. So now I'm just going to just go that way away, and I can almost take $1,000 in taxes.
As we all do.
And I understand the water, I understand that. Is there a way that we can almost do off days or something, instead of shutting off, please?
So we try to, so this is.
I think that would work, but you don't have this issue, I personally have a lot of.
I agree 100%, I understand you, we all have irrigation systems that we don't use. I understand if you spend, it doesn't matter if you spend $5 or $100,000, you're right. That, I agree with you. We don't have the water, that is the problem. The superintendent, the old superintendent, told everybody we had plenty of water, plenty of water, plenty of water, while his term was here, everybody thought they had enough of water. And they just kept building houses and building houses and building houses. But we didn't. And then it got to a point where we don't have the water just to sustain the residents, never mind irrigation systems. And now with the drought, that's the situation we're in. I'm being 100% honest with you, because I had nothing to hide, I'm not appreciative of that. So we have, we have wells on Cedar Street, we tried buying a piece of land on Cedar Street. This is what the residents don't understand and don't know, because they don't get it.
I know, I understand your needs, your myths and your needs.
It's crazy, the situation we're in. And if you already know what's going on, we've looked at land, we've tried using the Somerset well. 1923, they bought one of our wells from us, they won't let us use it, and it's on Dayton. They're pumping 150 gallons a minute of water out of their well onto ground, they're doing nothing with it. But they won't let us use it. If we had that 150 gallons a minute, we could turn all your irrigation systems back on. They will not let us use it, and it's in our town. We've tried, we've asked, we have a cease and desist order now, because we're trying to look for water in that area. They won't even let us. We're trying, it's not that easy. That's why Chuck is here. Cedar 1, we get 49 gallons a minute out of the well, it was 300 gallons when it was brand new. That's why Chuck is here tonight, we're trying to figure.
Well, I wondered about that, it was put in 2006, that you knew at the time it was put in, that it wasn't able to put out what you needed.
2006?
2006.
Well, well, well.
Oh, I wish about the needs.
No, but that's only your range.
There was a well that was put in, and it wasn't, it wasn't producing enough, and in the minutes, and superintendent Jeff, you are quoted in there saying that the well couldn't produce what, you know, even the pumping station couldn't produce what you guys.
Okay, so the treatment plan, the treatment.
The well itself, and there was something to do with the well, and that's happening here.
So we had three wells on Cedar Street.
No, but you know about it, because you just spoke about it.
We had three, we do it, we had three wells on Cedar Street, Cedar 1, Cedar 2, and Cedar 3. I think it was in Cedar 2 or Cedar 3 was put in that time. But that was the reason that we got here.
Yeah, no, I understand, so I think, I think we're trying to get, we're getting.
I just wanted to.
I understand, I understand, listen, I, I understand. If you want to compare my usage last year versus this year, did you pull that? Because it's, it's so nearly that much.
It doesn't matter when it's last year, it matters when it's going, it matters when it's going on now in the water.
We were watering last year, we're not nearly in watering out this year, we were hand watering. And you know, you know, we're looking at the data from last year, and you can prepare it, go back and prepare. I think what's happening here is we get a violation of a certain time, a certain date, that we found. And so you guys now just go check it, and say, oh, look at the payrolls, the payrolls have used this amount of water, not other.
It's terrible, it's terrible, you're doing it, we were. I want to hit you right now, we were wrong, that was wrong. We were informed, listen, we make mistakes, this was a mistake. I drive around at night to catch people, I do, and they can be on camera, so did Jason and Jeff and everybody else. It was told that if you didn't see it, we weren't supposed to do it. Well, we make mistakes, okay? We make mistakes, what else am I supposed to say, I'm sorry, we're not.
But I think that's a huge mistake to take a anonymous call from people.
Mrs. Phablet, I understand, I know what I've been about this whole night, I understand we make mistakes. Listen, it wasn't me.
So what I'm getting from this commissioner is you're going to withdraw this supply.
Yes, well, withdraw the complaint.
That's all we're here for.
That's fine, I just want to inform you at the same time of what the condition that we're in. And I'm not here for argument, I brought all residents to get involved, because not many people know what's going on. It's sad, it's sad, but we're trying the best we can. I understand that you guys put a lot of money to the yard, I have a lot of money in my yard too. It's awful, and that's sad, it does. But we tried everything, we're trying, we tried turning the Somerset water on, we got stopped on DDP. Tom Waters is not great, there was Aquaria, they pumped 20 million gallons to Brooklyn that they don't use. They don't, we're not tied in, we have more problems, but I can't handle so much.
So I would just like to know how many anonymous calls come into Mr. Quinn?
Why is it just me? Why is it just me?
I hear calls all the time.
He gets called all the time.
Yeah, no, but I'm just curious. Well, a lot of people have had, if on our sheet, you're less than tied to it, so I'm just curious.
That's fine, my less than may be tied to every single complaint in this town, because I don't appreciate folks that blatantly neglect the water.
Okay, and I appreciate you allowing for anonymous callers to call in and.
And once again, I will apologize, that shouldn't have been done, but it was. But I go down the list, and I see 621 seen watering by Jeff, 623 seen watering by Missy, 714 seen watering by, all water department employees.
Is this my house?
Yes.
So at that point in time, why wouldn't you come and bang on the door and?
And that's something that we're not, Jeff about, because at 623, I'm probably going to give you a letter that's there. I'm not banging on anyone's door at 623.
Right, and 21D calls are reasonably up, and then.
Not banging on.
At 2:00 in the morning, water.
At 8:00 or 9:00.
But that, why didn't you have sent some sort of notice?
Do you have, I did, do you remember us talking that I gave one for you?
You made a warning back, yes, back.
On 7:20, 150.
June, back in June, because we didn't know what the ID was.
And I, that's why I was reasonable, but then you knew about it, and, but you're still.
So if the commissioner could understand that the main focus here is not the fine, it's the process. We don't object to your fine, and if, well, I'll speak myself, I'm guilty, I'll pay for it. But due process is a line of love, and it should be, especially here at night.
Then.
And due process calls for certain steps to be taken when you give out those violations, and that's.
I don't, we're not, we're not going through this, yes, I apologize.
That's right, it's not a legal, I mean, we're.
Nobody's perfect here, and I'm not, I'm not.
Just really to quickly synopsis, the whole water aspect.
I get it, I get all that, I get everything you guys are talking about. Is this process as far as getting your wells, is that getting closer than years from now?
Years, years.
Well, it's been.
So we.
So we've been through this water ban for years now.
So Derek, you've been on the board for how long?
I know, I've been on the board for a year.
Chuck, tell, how long does it take for approval, do you figure approval?
Five, seven years for a new law. Five, seven years. We could find the water, but it's still going to take five or seven years.
So just, it's crazy, I understand it, but, but how did I put it into the situation? When I first got here, two and a half years ago, it was the old superintendent, and I, and I'm not saying that I'm, well, he ended up quitting, because I'm one to stay on stuff, to, I care, I'm not a politician. I go to the treatment plan, I go to the wells, I go to the breaks, I go to the stuff, I work for National Bridge. I care. Jeff came on the board.
Are you on the white?
Yes, yes. We've been here three years total combined, we got put into a situation, not put into a situation, but we got into a situation where it's going to take many years and many millions of dollars to rectify. And we're working on a plan now, and one of those is going to be a rate study, and the rates are going to go up. I'm going to be quite honest with you, because we have to pay for new water tanks on Main Street, on Williams Street, on Trainhouse Street. We need new water tanks, we need to expand the plant, we need to find new water wells. All that's going to be coming up in the, what, five to seven years, the next five to seven years, and it's not costing a lot of money. We had, the rates, the water usage rates have been low for many, many years, and the other board, previous boards focused more on keeping the rates low than reinvesting in the system, I'll be quite honest with you. Probably the wrong way to approach it, here we are now, it's the reality that we have to face. And Derek and I are going to do our best. We're not politicians, we work 60 hours a week. We do this because we want to do the right thing. And we have another position coming up, with Chairman Schwartz retiring, so we'll be looking for a third person. It's, it's a slow, arduous process, and it's not something that's going to fit so early.
Is that a point, is that position?
No, it's not a point, all these positions up here are.
By the users, not all founders, the people.
Just the users, the users are only.
Only in district.
Because everyone in Dayton is not in this district.
Correct, correct.
In district.
TNLP, North Dayton, there's three different entities here. But only the people that are tied into the Dayton Water District are eligible to vote.
How many customers in the district?
Well, there's 1,907 service connections, so it's kind of a. So it's, it's kind of a ask and answer.
Is it one vote per user or is it?
Yeah, one vote per person.
Per person, yeah.
One per address.
No, no, no one knows.
Like your wife, your beau.
I was just wondering in detail.
Anyone else on your team.
We, we banned new irrigation systems, we banned tying into the existing water system, all new houses. You have to put a wall in there. We're taking steps to.
Oh, I have a question about that. Um, so not buying new houses to tie into the lines, right, totally makes sense. So there are houses that haven't been built, who some of the lands, they still process being cleared or not even cleared yet. And they've already gone to like the planning board.
And you're okay.
And they're okay, right? So I think we saw like 500 out together.
We have 150 somewhat houses.
Okay, so I, so I have a question. So are you allowed to then go forward back to the planning board and say, listen, like, I know we agreed to this, but it just can't happen? They need to dig a well. So why not? Because it's already been approved, like, there's no way to, like, have that extended? Because if you don't have the water to survive.
It changes the lock size too, with the building, all the building codes change. Because then you have wells and setbacks. So the setbacks, the fundage, everything changes.
So whatever the motion has to say.
That's correct.
So what happens when, when 150 new houses go in? Say that happened next year? I, I may not have any choice but to ban all irrigation. We might not be able to.
And pumping directly, Superintendent, but you have storage tanks and tanks.
We got two tanks.
Storage tanks?
We have two storage tanks. One's 2 million gallons and one is, uh, I'm only 5,000.
Is it the whole profile?
No, one's on L1.
Yeah, one's up in 11 Williams, up behind the.
So much use.
So volume will help you?
What's that?
Volume? We started asking, as I mentioned, I, I read some of your minutes and some of the things. Where you're talking about how it draws down at a certain particular time and then you don't have the water to take up.
So the wells have to, the wells have to rest. And that's why, that's the only reason why that we made it through the summer.
So volume will help you?
It's not a big.
When they, when they built this system, they were looking for a big production well. They, we, they, they've dug, I said, hundreds of, hundreds, I said, right Chuck? We've looked at that, hundreds of test wells in this town, hundreds. They found two spots, two really vital spots. And they weren't, what I've read from the old engineers in New York was they didn't find a big production well. What they found was Cedar one, Cedar two, and Lawrence Street. And they were disappointed with what they found, but it's what they found. So those levels roughly do, all our wells combined, we may even get about 800 gallons a minute. And then they go through a treatment process. Right, so when you're pumping 800 gallons a minute of raw water to Williams Street from those wells, now they need to be treated. So we got clear wells underground. So what happens is we pump it out. You can't pump in 800 and pump out 800 because it completes decoy wells through rinsing processes and backwaters. We can really do about 700. That streaming going full bore like crazy. And, and actually we figured out the numbers were like 680, 670 something.
680,000 gallons a day?
No, like 670 gallons.
Oh, for the, just for the well.
So can you, if you can imagine 100 people putting their irrigation on, and all I'm getting out is 670 gallons.
That's a breach, that's one of the issues.
It sinks, like we're there.
Do you want to talk about, do you disagree on how many gallons per minute ahead?
It depends, it depends on who you're putting there for enough, uh.
My head's about two. When we were talking, you probably think the whole zone.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking.
You can do four gallons.
I've done the calculations on zones too and.
It depends, it depends.
Right, you can put in a different size at that. Or if you have good pressure, you have a bigger, you know, more heads on the top.
So on a long panel, you're looking for the desalination. So around, around water, that's what Swansea did.
And that, that plant has failed.
No, it's failed. They don't use, they didn't work.
The water, they failed to prepare.
Well, they spent $20 million on a.
I don't think so.
Piece of.
Oh, I was just wondering future.
So you can't mix, so that's what will happen with Swansea, people don't really realize. The different chemical compositions, even though the finished water is up to code, they don't mix. So like, we have Aquaria here in town. But if you just like the Swansea, if Swansea pulled our wells, they had a desalination plant, didn't mix with their well water, and then they had more problems. So now they don't use it. So that's the same thing that we have in town. We have Aquaria, we could get, feed the whole town with it, but it don't mix with the well water.
The other problem with Aquaria is the pressures. Like they, the connection is several hundred feet away. They were supposed to provide supplies become an emergency tension. I, I read the minutes. And they did, they technically did it. So do we have to fight them on that? Probably. Are we going to win? I don't know, by the time we end up, we usually fight them, uh, we probably just spent the money to put Maine to, to our name. The other problem is we need a pump. Because our pressure is equal, if not higher, to their pressure. So we're never going to be getting into our system. So we're talking hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. Just to buy water from them at around seven dollars per thousand gallons.
How old is this system?
Our system? 1950, we were incorporated.
So basically cash line pipe, like you guys are breaking that break?
Yeah, yeah.
Cash line break, we're, we're, that's, we put cash line.
We're doing this, yes, and cash line pipes now.
You get a. We go down there.
Right.
We have a lot of breakers.
We don't have, we have probably about 20 or 30 miles of cash line. It's not, it's not crazy, but then we have quite a bit of plastic. Which if it wasn't installed right, which, which would happen on Oak Street. Uh, it broke, they were doing the tap. And wherever it's installed, it wasn't us. Company installed it, there was a bone in it, when they did the tap, it snapped the main about 12 feet.
No expansion.
So when we did the tap, it blew. I wouldn't have said this, but that was a table.
About private wells? Like our, our development has a, a common reaching field. So we have individual septic tanks, which allows for the smaller lot sizes.
Yeah.
Could we, in theory, drill our own wells?
I, yeah, yeah. Irrigation, well, I'm looking at that myself, for my house.
Because I, I read somewhere that they were against code in Dayton to do.
I don't know.
Well, you'd have to deal with, that's not us.
Right, right, yeah, I just didn't know if you guys.
Strictly irrigation.
Especially it's this.
Do you know any companies that do that?
What's that?
Do you know any companies that?
I can give you the information if you want, right over here in the convert. Unfortunately, he's about eight months out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I talked to him, I talked to him about three weeks ago, and he's only one of the people that have the water. Because, and he said that to me, he couldn't believe that everybody, there's so many houses in the area that had shallow wells. This is the first time that they have not been.
If we didn't put the ban in, we're, we're more talking like we're talking right now. And talk about dirty water at this point, because that line would have created a mess. If we didn't do what we did, you were in a massive trouble. Right now, we're looking at, we're down to the bottom, quarter, bottom third of the wells.
The, the plant itself, the plant itself is under shot for, for the, the size of the town, number of houses in the town. Um, that's, that plant was probably outdated, two years after it was built, I would imagine. Chuck, you know, or I would, but it's, it's severely outdated at this point, from a size standpoint. What's it, is it designed to do 700 gallons a day?
The plant was, the plant was poorly designed. Right, none of us were here sorry. But it was designed to do 1.5 million gallons a day. We couldn't even do that if we tried for one. We figured it can do, we did it in the past, a million, about a million eighty. That's it, that's, that is full bore and that's not finished water, that's wild. Finished water, we're looking at maybe a hundred thousand gallons.
There's federal money available for this situation.
Yeah, the, that's, that's.
And the state, the state had a loan program which is probably.
So that's all Chuck. So that's why Chuck is here tonight, because we've worked.
And then of course you need the rate payers on board because you're not.
You're still paying the notes, like we're paying in notes for this treatment plan, right? That is insufficient for what the town can ask, not that we have the law for it, but if, if it could work the way it was does, it's supposed to be designed. It's, we're still paying them.
I, I think residents could work, if you put a water management plan together like some of the other communities in Massachusetts where it's more of an educational piece.
Why do I have an idea?
To not hold.
I have an idea for that, I should.
And then I would say what happened, if we get it under control, you could go to maybe three or four times a month, uh, different houses could do different things, but that's a lot of work for you guys.
I think that's work that people want to put in. Look, we're trying every avenue, it's not, I mean, we'll take suggestions, I mean, it's, it's a lot of work that we have in time. It's just, just to get, try to get it under control. I mean, and you're not, and, listen, I'm not, there's been a ton of people that we've been trying and trying and asking and it's, it's it's tough. And I understand you guys spent a lot of money, I mean, it is, it's a lot of money. And then we're going to be in the same boat next year and then what do you do? I mean, you don't let it die, but I understand.
I was sleeping with one eye open for, for weeks because I had a, but there was fire, we were, we were trying.
We had a Cedar. We had nothing, I lost this long board, Cedar.
I love that you guys did, you drilled on, not my priority, I'm sorry, like, not.
What is that?
It's not, any grass is not my, my prior or safe drinking water.
Or what it's worth, I tried to get these guys to do every other day. Last month, we shut me down.
That's what I'm thinking.
We, we tried.
Fifty times a week.
Yeah.
But I think more people would.
Chuck, you can help me on this. Well, most, most towns do with, with, either they have a water management, with according to their water management app, or if they have water issues such as us. A lot of towns do is it would be like a Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, Monday would be odd. Uh, third, Monday and Thursday, and then Tuesday and Friday.
In a logical, specific time.
And it'd be time constrained, so you have time to recover during the day. So that's what I'm going to propose next year, I'm going to propose to them and hopefully we can work it out.
That could cost a better compliance if you had something that.
We had to, it, it, what we ran into this year was a complete buzzsaw. Covid killed us, we pumped 12 million gallons more.
A lot of people staying home.
It was, it was nuts.
My wife stays for a week, she said.
By the time July, June hit, it was game over, like our tanks were to the point where if there was a water main break and the fires or, or if there was just a fire, we were putting, we were, we were running down there and jacking up that, our, uh, our pumps are just going to run to it and cause something, hopefully it would have helped.
A lot of gray water systems are coming online too for, for residents, not a small ones. The bigger commercial industrial people started using, but now they've started to bring online for residents that.
No, unfortunately, I think the previous superintendent did enforce the, the no sprinklers on new houses at the time. We would, we would be probably better suited to, um, like endor, what we're enduring, like, if, if you, if you're developing out of, for every, you know, a well system, uh, you know, water circle, Silvio A. If they add wells to the, for the, for the users in there, we would, we would be in a much better place.
Yeah, a common irrigation well, if you have a common.
We'd be able to prepare for this a little better. But right now, we kind of just got, got thrown on top of us and every, you know, we, now we're kind of backtracking. No, you've been here a couple of years, it's been here a year and a half, maybe a year and a half. It's just, all right, well, here's what, I apologize, being in the chamber, I mean, it's.
So will you send out a notice?
Yeah. I think, you know, my respect to, like, they should take anonymous, um, phone calls and don't attract.
I think some education on the residents is helpful as well. Uh, because there's a lot of misinformation out there. There was a lot of misinformation about why the water ban was happening. It was, uh, I heard from some other residents that it's a treatment issue, you hear it's a supply issue, you hear it's a, so there was all of these. Was it, well, yeah, so now you have both.
And I've talked to Tina a few times about.
So people don't take it seriously. If they hear, it's like, oh, that's their problem.
This is the most people.
If they're informed better, then they would, they would take it a little more seriously.
You know, I really thank this superintendent and, and I don't know why people's influence is so big. We'll be on it, we understand that. But I don't think we would have been here this way if it was a visual violation and it wasn't a hearsay. And that's pretty much the kind of people we are. We thought the procedure needs to be looked at.
It's going to change a little next year, so get ready, that's not going to be. And again, it's, it's the DEPs. The drought, there's a drought task force which kind of needs something for the DEP and they, then we have to institute things. But before that even happens, we just don't have the water. So I call DEP and they tell me, you need to do this. And that's what we do.
If you get noticed, a warning in those steps, those three steps, and the one step is shut the water off until you have decided and all that. Is that mine? Or is that every season?
Uh, I think if we redo the regs, then because a lot of times it is for like, like, uh, Shannon, it's for, yeah, once you get one warning, you're home forever.
And that, that's the one, that's your one for life. Because most of you are, that speak to false alarms and things such as that. You have two false alarms, they're going to, they're going to give you a bill.
So that's where I take, but I'm, sometimes I listen to people and they lie to me, so I, it's hard, you know, it's hard to listen. And then you go back and you go, I don't want it, it's like, I look like a fool. And then I got to tell them, like, yeah, I do.
Oh, because he is, he's too nice, he's been a few times, it's the same great part of people. And it's like, yeah, well, let go of it again and then it happens again.
So in order to have these seasonal warnings, do you have to go through your biologicals?
I'm going to have to change the guidelines.
Yeah, what does that take?
A vote.
Is that a vote, the users or is it a vote? Of the commission?
Biels, is that just a commission?
It's just a commission?
Yes, sir.
You, you have to understand, when you put bans on, it kills our revenue, like, it's nothing we want. This is not something we want.
That'll be discussed later on, see. Or. And they're seeing the fines, I'm going to get, because people are just paying the fines. What's $50 now? If you spend a hundred thousand dollars, you don't care about $50. And then, I'll see if I get caught, when I get caught, and then we're paying the overtime, it's like.
You just supported our arguments, that's all it is. And I gave you the money. And now it's a life. Thanks, you don't have much.
Derek, if I could, could I just?
Yeah.
Um, I'm Chuck Alford, I work for Environmental Partners and I do water, uh, treatment water supply, it's my forte. I just want to make it clear that, that this is passed down from the drought task force and mass DEP. and mass DEPs, so this community's not unlike any others, so all the communities in the area.
There's a lot of bans.
So, um, I mean, this board is acting on behalf of the district, but they have to abide by the regulations of mass DEP. Mass DEP has, in my town in Renton, we have a complete water ban as well, no hand water or nothing, so Dyton's not any different than Renton, and that comes from DEP, that, these, I mean, they, they can put the water ban on themselves, because in, locally, a mass DEP on the southeast region, every town is on water ban, so it's not.
Basically, take it out of your head.
Yeah, it's not, it's not like, Dyton is any different than any other town in the area, and, and just to reinforce the point, that's can of water in as well, you're not, I'm, I'm on the Knights of Columbus, we, we want to do a car wash at our church, and the town shuts down, we couldn't do it. We're doing it as a fundraising effort, but we would have been, we would have been fine, the church would have been, so, I just want you to understand, it's not, this board is, you know, doing it in this town.
Yeah, at any level, we have, they have the responsibility by petitioning their office.
It's more like, I wanna save the water supply, I don't, we don't, I don't care if you're filing the trial account, trying to save the water, like, we are, we're all trying to save this water supply, it's not a joke.
You know, you guys go five times, you know.
Like, it's not a joke, I don't want any of them to take it, I would never do it if it wasn't.
Yeah, I could actually see a problem in the project, we needed to do something to get a well, whatever, you know what I mean, but, uh, that's all I can, I can hope for that.
You can speak on behalf of the Rayco team.
You can speak on behalf of the Rayco team.
Yeah, probably.
And just, just to reinforce their point, um, we did our watches to master plan, presented them to them earlier this, this summer, we're making the same recommendations that were made ten years ago before this board was even here. So, I mean, back in 2008 was the last time that they really did any improvements to the system, and they haven't really raised the rates, or done anything on that, so, so they're being very proactive now, they're in the past that was not happening, so, just so you understand, this board's doing the right thing right now.
Absolutely, and there's one way to apply this long, red tape and everything, and that would be a special act of legislation. I don't know if the Q or the, um, town council people that would petition anything, the Home Rule put them up, and, um, it's probably here.
Well, kind of, we've had, had that involved quite a bit.
Yeah, did she mention any Home Rules to cut some of the red tape?
Trying.
Yeah, that's, 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 you can do that, and that's a way to go, and enough people write them letters, they'll get it, huh?
Well, we've tried that with Somerset, well, obviously, I was telling you for Brook Street, well, if you have some extra time, look into that, we've tried and tried and tried, it's an issue, so now that we found a parcel of land off of Brook Street, that bought that piece of land that they own, so we're gonna do some.
Well, it's all going to come on the drought, it's pretty severe.
Between the drought and COVID, and it was, it's, 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 it's.
We did some improvements to the treatment plant, right before the COVID started, so we were down a filter, that was another thing, that we didn't know COVID was coming. The, the treatment plant, the tanks were over fifteen years, were on thirteen, haven't been maintenance, so we took one offline, spent a hundred thousand dollars revamped it, well, a month before COVID, and then when COVID started, we were only running on two tanks, so, I mean, it's just like a snowball effect of, oh, enough for this, enough for me.
Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you.
Mr. Paywell, I wish I could say turn irrigation next year, but I'll have to see what happens.
I have to do rain dance every day.
Come to the house and do something too, because I need, I can, I can cry every morning, so.
Thanks for being tired, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, as you had requested at the, the board requested at the last meeting, um, Jeff and I worked together on, on, we'll get a leak inspection survey, Spoka Services, and, um, which been provided, and Jeff's gonna go out and get a couple of quotes for that, so, um, you can see, uh, what's happening, what's going on with the, the listening system, so, um, so that was the first piece of business you had requested last time, and then, for Cedar, uh, 1A, while we're placed, we put together a proposal for that, um, it's actually a letter agreement, um, which, um, we provide services from all the way through to the production well drilling, all the way through, uh, general services during construction, and I can go down each of the tasks, but basically, the installation and development of Cedar Street well number, uh, 1R, we had that test well that was fifty feet behind the, the second building there on Cedar, Cedar 1, and we got a quote from, uh, Frank Sullivan, um, to, to go in there and, and do that, uh, the drilling of that production well, and most of the costs in that first base are for Frank to go in there and do the drilling, and then, uh, the second phase is the pump test, so we'll oversee that. This is all a requirement that's necessary by mass DEP to determine that, the, first of all, that the water quality, uh, is good, but also the capacity of the well is what we think it is, um, but as we had indicated during that groundwater exploration program, that that, that well produced very well. One of the things that I wanted to talk to you about is, we petitioned, uh, DEP to see if we could get that rate increase from, um, I think it's kind of nineteen gallons a minute for Cedar 1, because that production well could produce up to three hundred gallons a minute, so we were hoping to maybe double that, but because it has, um, it doesn't have a conforming zone one, where Cedar Street goes through the zone one area, they had said, they, they had said that you could only do it as a replacement well, so that they could increase it, but obviously, they're very cognizant of the fact that you don't have water, but that you shouldn't explore other areas to do a well field, which obviously isn't the plan anyway.
Still, even if we bring it from forty to a hundred and fifty, was that too far?
Well, in the summer, you could do two hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
And after the winter, you'd do seventy-five, you make up the difference.
Oh, I.
So it's just an average?
Yeah, it's an average.
That's, that's in gallons is an average.
Yep, definitely. So, and that, that's consistent with everybody's, you know, and, and obviously, DEP, they're, you know, if you go over a little bit, you know, they're probably not gonna cite you being, but, um.
A lot of times, if you go over enough, they give you more, a lot of times, if you've been built out of, uh.
Yeah, well, I think that Jeff brought up a good point too, is that, you know, the time that we're gonna need the water, you can take more, so, um.
So this is two hundred and fifty-six thousand to see if it's viable?
Well, yeah, but I think that, just from the, the test, all we did, and we did that step process where we, you know, drilled the four inch test wells to make sure that the water was there, water quality was great, that, that, that spurs pretty good, I don't think that you have any problems there. Um, and this is, you know, obviously, you get part of the construction done, and because the, the, the production will be installed, and then the second phase will be just to connect it, which, um, we've included our design services for that and true construction, but I would mention to Jeff that we've done, so he, I feel really comfortable with this cost, um, obviously, we like working with Frank, he's great, um, and, and he does these for us all the time, you know, we, we tend to use, both Mar and, and Sullivan are good, but, uh, we like Frank to do the production well for us, because, uh, the form of drilling that he does is, is what we like, so it's good to get Frank on board to do that, and we just did the same thing in, um, Seapunk, and we did the same thing at Foxborough, um, and it's very similar projects, where you have a replacement well, it's about fifty feet away from your, um, existing well, and they both go through buildings, which is what we're gonna do here, we'll basically got the, uh, the second building there, um...
So we'll get it out of there and we'll go straight into the main, you got that in there?
Yeah, yeah.
So we got one there, do we have to put a building up over the?
No, no, that's the good thing about it, it's a different type of construction, so, um, you're gonna have a submersible pump in there, and it picks it up.
Right, after.
So, so you, you probably fence it in, but you don't want to do any of that.
See, I was ready to see you a little.
Yep, that's good.
So, um, and then, you know, like I said, it, we'll, we'll have to do a hydrology evaluation to determine what the pump sizes and, and that type of thing, so that's the task for, and then we'll go into the, uh, implementation, which is the design and permitting, it's gonna be a requirement to, um, do a notice of intent with the conservation commission before we're within, uh, Butlerman area there, we won't be disturbing the wiring of that one, but we'll be in buffer zone there, so, uh, a notice of intent there will be included, and all the permitting for DEPs through construction, and the well abandonment for the existing well that happened during construction, the contract will actually submit that, but we'll put in the documents what the contract has to do with, uh, decommission and, uh, do the demolition of that well, and we'll see that, that permit.
Yeah, we already used the, the, the.
Yep, yep, so, um, and also, I mean, we're hoping for a, a year, but it, you know, it all depends on DEP and every process, I will tell you that there's a late issue, um, just because of the COVID, and people getting out and everything, we're already seeing, like, we had submitted your, uh, pump test report, and, uh, still haven't gotten approval from them on that, so, uh, but that, that should happen, um.
So this two hundred and fifty-six thousand is to get us to the point where we're ready to drill and finish it?
Well, it'll be drilled, this'll, this includes the drum.
Other than the well?
Yes.
It'll be the demolition, tie in.
Yeah, the connections to tie in.
On top of this.
So you'll see that one is where it goes in, you gotta get it out of there, and go straight to the main, right, on the street.
So that, that, you know, I can get you some numbers on that, I don't know.
Just ballpark, Chuck, like this.
Uh, I'm thinking that it, it, it won't be more than five hundred thousand dollars, so, um, probably about that.
For the well itself?
For the connection.
The connection, very far.
Or, well, the, the contractor's coming to connect the well, the well's included in this.
In the two six, in the two fifty-six.
To a nullifier?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that large, huh?
Well, look, let me go take a little bit of, the, the cost that we have for, for Seapunk, I don't have it right in my head.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
But I can get that, I can get that for this, for the next meeting or whatever you guys wanna talk about. Actually, I could just know that.
Right.
Alright, and we'll just have to talk about it.
Yeah, I, I know, obviously, you have to go through district meeting anyway to get approval for, but, and then, I don't know about the financing, so, you know.
Yeah, I have to go for a loan.
Yeah, yeah.
For a loan, and then.
Yeah, right.
When a loan is due, obviously, that's when, you know, you get rates, you get rates adjusted.
Yeah, I, I mean, if you wanna present to the public and, you know, you know, as far as, whenever you get to the point where you wanna talk rates or anything, you know, we can come in and, and explain why, you know, obviously, with the improvements that are necessary, and what we recommended in the, the water system master plan, we'll support you in any way that you need, so.
When is the timeframe, or when do you need to keep going with this, like, I know, we'll, we'll be stalled now, so we'll stall you, like.
Yeah, well.
We gotta kinda keep trying to truck forward, I think, is it, you know, do you need, uh, ninety thousand dollars to keep rolling with this, and then keep, make a payment, so you need the whole four hundred and sixty thousand to, to keep this thing rolling, like, how do you?
Yeah, well, I mean, obviously, we could do it in phases, um, when do we go for a loan? Well, I think that, um...
You know what I'm saying?
We could, we could do the first three tasks first, but, but they're all connected with, um, the drilling, so the, your upfront costs are higher because that's all Frank's work for that.
Correct, correct, correct.
So, um, you, you know, you can, I, I think that you'd have to group at least the first two tasks together, because that's all Frank's stuff, and then we would prepare a report that describes that, but, so.
But just so we have an idea.
Yeah.
And what, it'd take a year?
It's gonna, it's, it minimum will be a year, because it's.
No, no.
It's, it's, it could take, it, it could take eighteen to twenty-four months, so, depending upon DEP, so, the sooner the better, but, um, I know that you're kind of hamstrung with the financing and that type of thing, so, um, I don't know if you can, I mean, you can't anticipate that they'll approve the rate, so I guess you can't go on a short-term borrow, but, um, but, you know, the sooner the better, we move forward with, basically, the first five tasks, we get that done.
Right.
You know, and then, you know, we'd be stalled a little bit, um, because DEP has to, the pump test report, they have to approve that before we go forward, so that's gonna take them at least two months, and maybe more, depending on how quickly they do that, so, at least the three tasks moving forward would get us going in the right direction until DEP has to kind of stall us for a couple of.
So the first three, the first two?
Well, the first three would get the, I don't wanna hold up a report, because if you hold up a report, then you.
Hold up the D, yeah, okay.
So I would, I would recommend the first three, if you're gonna segment it, and then, then four and five, and then six and seven will just be, that's the big phase in construction for the second part of the project, you can do that one if you want.
And how long time wise, the first three, one, that's it?
Um, to get that submitted, that's a good question, um, I think that we could, this Frank, uh, I think that that'd probably be six months to do that.
So, basically, it could be two to, like, this will be example, hundred thousand one year.
Okay, so it's a hundred and a thousand, and you need the first three tasks, so, explain to me real quick, the, a four and forty hour pump test, and why it's thirty-nine range, I'm, I'm speaking as I'm getting into it, and I would like to.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine, that's, um, when we're out there, that, um, Sullivan, uh, Frank Sullivan has to be out there for that whole test, and he has his crew that they're pumping for forty-eight hours, but Environmental Partners is out there as well, so that we'll have, uh, somebody out there to take pre, uh, pump test, uh, readings, we have all our equipment that is gonna go in all the test wells to determine, we have to provide, uh, water levels, um, um, drops, or, you know, static water levels.
So it's one for the forty, forty-eight straight hours?
Yeah, forty-eight straight hours with the pumping, and manning the pump, and they'll, I think, I think Frank has to have somebody there, at least they have to check in and make sure it's working properly for most of that test, I don't know exactly what their protocol is, but we'll have people out there, um, intermittently to take water level readings and make it sure our, um, we have manual or, uh, automatic, uh, detectors that will determine where the water levels are, but we have to make sure that they're running properly intermittently throughout, so, it's all the background data that comes from that, where we have a pump test, it's gonna go into the pump test report that must submit to DEP, so they know exactly how the aquifers reacting, and that we'll be able to get that flow out of it that we need.
I have another question, so once you finish these tasks with connecting it to the main, be, in conjunction with this, or after the stall?
Um, the last, uh, we did the project, and then that construction administration will be doing that in parallel with that contract review of work, so, you know, the review of Shop Run, the, you know, the review of K-Rex, uh, would happen during construction.
Would you agree that?
Basically, all.
Yeah, I would, I would say that we probably might go for a loan for the whole thing at once, right? Instead of just piecemealing it, because now you're paying administrative, so, more, instead of just one, you know, seven hundred thousand, say, one time, you'd owe for that money for a loan.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, from a, a, you know, a cost standpoint, you're right, I mean, you wouldn't have to keep going back and, and paying the finance people to, to initiate water loans.
So if we had, if we had a, a total scope, a total, a focal, then go for it for one time, and there it is, this is the cost, if we have high cost, and then go for it for one, one shot.
Alright, so can you guys set a loan?
Yeah, yeah.
And I would not just, you know, when I just do the first three or four, okay, we got enough for the next. Well, no, I was just trying to see, let's just say that we have a hundred thousand, by the time we get the loan, how long's the loan take? How long's the loan gonna take?
Uh, I don't know, the only loan they've done was for this, and it was like five or so.
Okay, well, I was just gonna say, if it takes six months to do the loan, now you're on a loan, six more months, okay, then you can continue on with your other one.
No, it's, it's a good thought, I, I think that that's something we should have to clarify, because I think that the sooner you get started with these first three tasks, and to get that report from DEP, that.
It might take us a little longer at this point, but I think in the long run, you'll save money.
Well, we can, you can look at the loan stuff on your end, and then I'll get you those, I can get to the cost probably before the end of the week.
Do you count with loan process?
Um, we, we normally don't do that, but we can, but, you know.
No, I mean, I, I know what you're gonna be, but, uh.
Yeah, and then, and actually, we've, we've supported with, with the financial information that we, you know, class system and that type of thing, but you're bad, you're probably even bad, because I'm working with them, I'm always on cutting that down too, so, um, but it's, it's the town's contracts with them, or works with them, and then I support the town, so I'll do the same for you.
Alright. So, I got.
So I'll get that cost, I'll, I'll get that cost to Jeff and Tina before your next meeting, and then I'll push that out to you, and if you guys need me at any time, from now.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, guys, have a good night, guys.
Bye.
Thank you.
Approve the minutes of prior meetings, is there a motion to approve the minutes of September fourteenth, once a meeting? Uh, so moved, can he, forget, step down a second?
Yes, step down a second.
I'll step down a second. Any discussion here, none, all those in favor? Aye. These have it, reading the correspondence, a letter from Somerset.
I think that, uh, it's in fact.
Yeah.
I mean, I, do you want me to read it?
I'll read it.
So, Dear Chairman Schwartz, it has come to our attention that our board, that your organization may be planning to perform water supply well exploration in the segregated river watershed, as you know, the town of Somerset owns the water rights of the segregated river and its watershed, as confirmed on the Superior Call final, just predated September twenty-third, nineteen sixty-two, as such, Somerset Water Water and Civil Commission request a letter on its head from your board, if these actions are in fact to be considered. Should your board confirm this intent, we would require review of your plans and proposed actions prior to considering agreement to authorize well exploration in the state watershed. State of, regards, our Brian.
So, I received that letter, but before the letter was received, I, I did, I did obviously some work, uh, saying, because I know they, you know, complained such as they did, so I did talk to DEP, uh, the drinking water program director, basically told us to just contact, you can, I sent you guys, so you can, you can drill, and, uh, just contact, contact your council for basically our level, because they do not, it was my understanding, my experience, that no, no town owns anything underground, it's the state, the state of Massachusetts, basically, they.
Is the authority?
Has the, they have the authority, but anything underground, they actually have the authority, they, they issue water management acts, so, yes, we can't divert the segregated for our rights, because they have rights to it, but we can take water from the underground water trust, and that's what I asked Mr. Danny, did he, uh, not do that? Matt, Matt, is it Matt's cost?
Is it right here?
Ask Matt cost as rebuttal.
Go on, go on.
I don't think you done it, so I just said.
Okay, excuse me. Matt, I asked Matt to give us a rebuttal, just so we don't, and I talked to D E P because I did not want to waste fifty thousand dollars on a exploration without some form, something hard, so D E P did say, go ahead, and he has Matt's rebuttal. I don't know if we can send it over to the man or not, you know.
Well, at the end it says that we want that to help us construct that back to Somerset, they tell.
Yeah. It's Matt's opinion that in nineteen sixty-two was talking about surface block and general block. And back in nineteen sixty-two, the wells that were processed to supply, I think it was like eighty-seven percent of that town of Somerset's water supply. Right now, it's supplied zero percent, so they're gonna have a really hard time finding some what they own. Because they don't use anything and dump it in the ground.
Correct.
And that's.
Financial conditions, operating budget, actual balances, income for the first three months of the fiscal year is six hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-four seventeen, with expenses at one million thirty-five, three hundred and five dollars, twenty-four cents, which is forty-two point nine percent of our budget expenses. Our receivables, as of September thirty, outstanding receivables are eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-four cents. The month's commitments were twenty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-four cents, and the water receiving holds for the month were forty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and five cents. Is there a motion to accept the furniture research thoughts I presented?
So.
So I'll step down in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. You guys have it. Is there a motion to approve the expenditure warrants? This three, this one?
Expenditure.
Oh, okay, so moved. So I'll step down in a second. Any discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. You guys have it. Supervisors report?
All right, so we recently ordered a products box, the Morris, and I received a few quotes, I don't know, Team D humor, you still have that?
Filter.
The filter?
Yes.
So in case we pull a guy, go for the filter, replace him, and then go forward. We got the Morris products box, the signs are reported.
So this filter, this filter cost, the one that's a hundred and nine?
Yeah, but.
Same thing you did last year, right?
It is, but I added a little on the welding because this filter, we do, one, this is the worst one, it has the most holes. So I think it was five thousand for welding last time?
Yes.
We added five more.
What did we spend on the filter last year?
One, the same.
Okay, that was seven, sorry, I meant that was seven.
Well, I mean, remember we bargained for that seventy or eighty?
Yeah.
And then they filed up the other things for.
Oh, gotcha, that's right, wrong, yes.
So I don't see why these are, it's kind of odd, like they prepared for it. That's it to be basically building like we did the last one.
Okay.
Two minutes.
Which if the first one failed. So the hundred and nine thousand is worth investment to make the filter run properly? What I'm getting at is just choose what to squeeze for a hundred and nine thousand dollars with knowing what we know about one that fixed last year.
When I, when I talked to their supervisors, they gave me that day, they said, I don't consciously feel right doing this filter, put me at that because you could have a catastrophic failure. And he said, if the others were constructed like this, you just don't know when they're gonna go. And when they go, here it goes, never, never know. So that's the part that really scared me. Not scared, well, yeah.
Well, we do one more, I mean.
Yeah, we definitely have optimized the plan.
And we can make a decision if it's abandoned, if there's one or.
It's just if we do find a well out there, you can, we can get time out of this plant without having to do giant steps if we need to find an external well that does its own thing.
Only because you guys are learning it better also.
Oh, okay. No, it's thirty hours right now.
We have to vote on that hundred and nine thousand, that's a district, right? District, excuse me, district meeting?
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the.
We have a number?
Yeah, it's in the, it's coming.
Okay.
So I think it's a problem that Team is trying to get at.
And we gotta start, we gotta start writing in the first.
We have some money in capital improvement, capital stabilization. All right, those two, but at the end of the year, whatever, how it's set up, we have to come up with the four hundred and eighty thousand, it's rough, five something?
It's usually around six, seven, five that I have to pay on.
Right, right off the bat.
In July, in July.
So usually that comes from what you have in free cash, right?
Right, like in the past you've had a lot of improvements, the money's been there, so it's never been a worry. But like this year, you saw our free cash is almost half of what it was last year.
Yeah, it's almost.
It's gonna be all.
It's easy, right?
That's what we have to read, it's really just.
Right.
So that's, you do have another three drug right now?
So even after, even after this is raining, or the baby wars raining?
Haven't seen a difference. Hopefully I see something. We did walk the streams and we started to see some water. They haven't come down yet, but they're starting to come down from the head wherever they start, so at least it's, it's coming. That last rain was the, adds a little bit, but Saturday, maybe, maybe they'll filter down into water stream. See the streets jump? I mean, a lot of us are just saying, well, it's tough. Right now we compensate by eighty, six hundred gallons raw. And I can't really do it all day because by noon, you look at it and the levels are just, they crept down like a half a foot. Are you kidding me? So you step it down to about five fifty, and by the end of the night of Europe, you're hopefully at five. You know, you're just every, every like five, four, five hours, you're like, I gotta bring that down. I gotta bring that down a little bit just the, the dynamic levels come down so much. It's, it's about what the media are pumping every, every small right now, it's good. Polling, I don't know, crazy.
Are they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think it adds, it does add sixty to eighty, sixty to eighty thousand down there.
What is going on with the rates?
We, I'll come, we might, if we're gonna do a job. I'll, I'll give him a call then.
Right, is it, was it simple?
Yeah, I wanna, I'll call him on the rate adjustment. He did say that we could have a new place by the main, did you say name?
Marsh?
Marsh?
Oh, well, maybe you got it, Marsh.
Marsh. Like soup, like dog, so let me push him. Because there's other things that we.
I think we're just waiting to see if we got the correct.
The grants, I mean, if we can get a program with that, I think we jump on it because it just kind of supports.
How much was the grant for?
Eighty, twenty?
It was eighty percent of the, we had, I think it was eight thousand, it's on the special one, article.
Like an eighty percent, three, twenty percent there. I had to chuck through a rate study on our own, it'd be like thirty, eighty-five hundred.
Right.
If we have to make the rate, you're into it for twenty percent.
Our whole business, Bristol County, cultural high school update.
Pudding along, they're pretty much done with water stuff, they're shit, couple of. They're all in the main, and all the residents are, yeah, yeah, the domain is up and down. Then up and going out for a little while, they're still doing some projects in there, but they're pretty much pottin' up water for the year. They're gonna be tearing some, they're gonna be down the gym, they're having asbestos removal, they need to hide it in the floor, which is vermicula, I don't know, so they had a, we had a, for a few days, they're still building. Because they can only do it when the kids are there. They're gonna be there a while.
What's that? Employee policy handbook?
Yeah, they, they, you have to say they're on.
All right.
I know we discussed it.
We need to add something to that one, you wanna work on it?
Yeah, we need to, yeah. What do we have to?
The protocol.
I'm sorry?
Talk about that.
It's a pro, yeah, no.
All right, have you noticed? Special district meeting warrant, review, discuss the dates. So Thursday, Thanksgiving, Tuesday. All right, so we want to have a special meeting by November seventeenth.
Yeah, so the, 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 this is our next regular meeting, eleven is off because that's, that's it.
November. So when's our, so when's our next meeting?
The fifth.
Fifth of November. I'm putting that in the calendar, make sure I'm putting it in the right day.
Six o'clock.
You gotta kill me six o'clock.
I asked anyone when they wanted this.
Well, I have that disappointment.
Election day is the third.
Yeah, yes, we have to do that.
Can we, is there, are we set on?
You talk about giving you dates because of where we live, so like here you only have thirteen people, which you probably wouldn't have had thirteen people, but yeah, no.
All right, so you want to have a special meeting on the fifth because you have the disappointment? No, the, the, the regular meeting, the thought.
The fifth is not, fifth is our regular.
Okay, so you're okay with that? No, I, I, I need to, I can't, I'm not moving to this point because I've moved to four times already.
You said.
Okay, I have to see when, when the hospital.
Oh, I, I can do it on the fifth, but it would have to be four o'clock.
You might win there with something already scheduled before we have to go there.
We got the twelfth? I thought there was a.
I look old, so. I, I, I need to paint, but my teeth put it. What, you want me to, let me take this out, I'll show you.
Your crown?
What the hell happened? I got an implant.
Oh, me too.
And.
Ear corks?
Scars? Yeah, they're in there. And COVID pushed everything back and she, my dentist went on a turning the lead and it just pushed back five times.
It couldn't be crunched?
All stories.
Oh.
It's been.
Did that happen to Dr. Ross?
It's been a fun process. I can do the fifth, but it has to be like four o'clock, because my club is at six. I feel like this is fucking. Mark my.
That's awful.
Well, she was out of her phone, can't have it back in her favor, right?
Can't, can't have it, I don't know, see one now.
Why don't five numbers, just to let you know?
Yeah.
We'll call them off.
Okay. But just sure, all right, please.
Yeah, I'll see what happens.
Anytime before six is fine. I, I mean, well, I'd say, yeah, anytime before six.
We take the value first or something?
They're just putting them.
Oh, all right. I, I can't get a pass though.
All right, special, special election.
Um, did you?
Has to be by the fourteenth of December, so or meeting on December ninth, at what time?
All right, so what do you want me to, I can post the election tomorrow?
Okay.
And I usually give them about four weeks to pull papers.
So, uh, for the vacant position, right? So if you post it tomorrow, which is the fifteenth, you have to give them by November.
I think you should give them about four weeks to.
To pull papers?
Yeah.
So that'll give us one, two, to the twelfth of November, and then we have the election on the way.
Then, like, three, four weeks after that.
Like the one, two, ten of summer?
Yeah, yeah, somewhere around there.
Okay.
The tenth, fourteenth, that's what I can get.
So the week of December fourteenth, somewhere around there?
Yeah, it's over.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, it doesn't, I'll just do it right.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Like we did in this last one.
Do I see a postal tomorrow? Post tomorrow.
Did you review the articles on?
I have right now. We wouldn't know tomorrow?
Yeah, we don't get to sign this until, I have to put it seven days before the meeting, so. Do you have any dates that won't work for the special meeting?
And that's gonna be in November?
Yes.
Yeah, anyway, you can explain, like, you explain to me how, how the funding works at the end of the year, what, what it takes. Because it's, it's, at some point, try to explain it, because it's, it's not the easiest thing to follow, but it makes sense, which is really.
Okay.
I just, do you remember we had the conversation about, because I have a lot of ideas on there, right, so.
Oh, well, having the money at the end of the year.
Having the money at the end of the year to pay it, you know. It's not, it makes sense to me, but I can't explain it the way we explained it.
The, to have a little bit of extra in the free cash and, that's a good conversation.
With that knowledge.
So, so we look on the, more, I did it two different ways to look at how we're running. One is if we fund our filter, take it out of capital stabilization, and one is if we take it out free cash. It's kind of, unless you want to raise appropriate some more of this, these particles instead of.
So rate, raise appropriate comes from where?
That'd be rates and tax.
Okay. Transfer for free cash, I know what that is.
That's free cash, that's a bad example.
And then what was the third option? The other third option was?
Using the.
Capitalization.
But if we don't have enough free cash, right, you have to use that to pay the note.
Correct.
The next year.
And also, if we go out for bonding, you like to have money.
Yeah, so then we should do, well, free cash, free cash, we should raise more.
Stabilization, capital stabilization.
Okay.
So we get to big.
So you don't like to keep those.
So we want to raise appropriate if we can.
I would do some of them, like.
The big ticket items, what would, what would you do with the big ticket items?
Then I'd do free cash, I think.
Okay, a hundred and twenty grand for a tank.
Right, and I'm not sure maybe we can really, I mean, community program, that's not a reasonable thing.
So what's our free cash balance now?
It's, well, I don't think.
Oh, I'm sorry, the, the, yeah.
What, you want to do all these projects, other than the projects that are more important than the.
Right.
Some of these we have to do, like.
Oh, no, which one?
Article three, the liability, the free, the post-employment liability, trust fund, we have to fund that, correct?
It, we, we were having an audit, yeah, there's a sound brain on that, so that's less than, I can cut that by a thousand, you want, I'm like twenty-five.
It's already down from the twenty-five thousand you used to do.
Yeah, no, I see, it's kind of ranked, so. The fiscal year before we compensate, I guess that's for OT.
That's one of my interests.
Get rid of that.
We'll do that, please, Peter?
Please do.
All right, so we can look at this.
Yeah, we're gonna sign.
Well, we're gonna wait a minute and, all right, we'll keep moving on.
You may not do, sign this, one, I get scheduled a special meeting for, who might not have signed it before the next meeting, but it might not be.
All right, the regular next meeting, well, we'll see, there is enough fiscal work, is there any public input? Is there a motion to go into executive session under provision of chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A two, non, non-uni person L? So you have to say, we're not coming back to number L, okay, so, so. All right, I'll step down in a second. Any discussion here, not all those in favor? Aye. We will not be coming back until we're set.